Good evening. There we go. Everybody's very chatty. I'd like to welcome you to the Proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. It is Monday, August 6th. We would like to welcome you to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Grant, if you could, call the roll. Ms. Shaki is excused. Ms. Slade?
Present.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Here.
Ms. Grant, present. Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Reverend Mathias?
Present.
Mr. Ross?
Present.
And President Fob?
Present.
Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'm moved.
Support?
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have no celebrations, no student representative. Do we have public comment for board agenda items?
Sorry. We do. Yeah. Yeah.
Great. So we have several. Um, we'll call the -- how many do we have?
Seven.
Okay. We'll just, we'll call the first three down?
Yes. So we have Tyra Zarmaman. I apologize for the pronunciation. Kelly Hunn and Ann Swisher.
Mine is not on the -- sorry, for Kelly Hunn, mine is not on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Michael Bukala. So come on down. Yeah, all three of you can come on down. Mr. Bukala, Ms. Zamarin, and Ms. Swisher. I know which was Mr. Bukala, but who do we have here?
Ms. Zamarin.
Okay.
I'm Ann Swisher.
Ms. Swisher, if you want to begin, state your name. We have three minutes.
Sure. Good evening, Board, Ms. Fob and Ms. Neal. My name is Ann Swisher. Depending on who you are and where you sit, the success of this district ranges from abloated example to the nation of what a district can do to the morale in the district is terrible. I worked in the community-based programs 14 of almost 18 years here at GRPS. I have seen firsthand how center-based programs have been diminished. When Ms. Neal had her first meetings with staff, I asked her about special education in the district. Ms. Neal stated she supported special education. I was thrilled. But time passed, priorities changed, politics and economics took over. In 2015, the teachers and support staff of the Mayfield Transition Program, with the support of the GREA, created a survey about concerns regarding the changes that occurred in this program. For instance, moving around the five principals into different buildings, creating resource rooms from categorical rooms on IDPs, and later telling parents about these changes. Teachers had to rebid on their own classrooms. The board dismissed our concerns. The result for the staff is that really good teachers and staff left the district. Staff were disrespected, morale was low. I know two teachers who were reprimanded because they sent letters with their concerns to the then-president, Tony Baker, and he shared them with administrators. He could have called the teachers and talked to them. There was an audit of special education programs three years ago, but we were given a brief description, but no staff member I know has ever seen the results. Now the ISD is doing their audit. Last March, many straight school building staff, which used to be the Mayfield staff and the GREA, presented a petition that went one step further than the survey, a petition to remove Special Education Director Laura Lamore. Parents participated, with many of their own complaints about their children's concerns. There were hundreds of signatures on that petition. The board did not respond. The results were teachers and parents were called liars by Ms. Neal, and Ms. Neal dismissed media reports to benefactors by stating they should just ignore the reports. I also heard Ms. Neal state, Ms. Lamore will not be removed because she has done everything I've asked her to do. Ms. Neal's mentor, Department of Education Chairwoman, Vessi DeVos, has only one education policy: choice. Which is really a choice for those who have their resources to have a choice. Unfortunately, many young adults in these programs don't have many other resources but GRPS and community resources, and their funding has also been severely cut by the state. The staff of community-based programs have heard their rumor for years that the Kent ISD will take over their programs. What took them so long? The board put us through all these ridiculous changes, created terrible morale, and lost very good staff. For what reason? Teachers and staff spoke up for their students, and this is how the board responded. I am really grateful the ISD is taking over the program, and this board should be ashamed.
Thanks, Ms. Swisher. Uh, we have, I'm going to butcher your name again, Ms. Zarmaman?
Hi. I would like to add a bit to that story, a personal anecdote about Laura Lamore and Ms. Neal. It's about my son, Jameson, who has autism and ADHD. He was involved in intensive therapy since he was about 20 months old, entered home-based therapy early on, and participated in ECSE and GSRP in Grand Rapids Public Schools. He had multiple behavioral issues where he had to be picked up, which, again, is illegal -- or which is legal, due to the staff having the lack of resources to help him during ECSE and GSRP. I didn't make a big noise because he had already had intensive therapy, and it wasn't a big deal. My concern was when he entered kindergarten. I had multiple meetings prior to the beginning of school with Christine Robertson, the social worker and the principal of that school, where I brought along Jameson's support coordinator, ABA therapist, and recommendations of his Great Start teachers, where he would need a one-on-one aide because he was being transitioned into a general education classroom, and I knew that he would not be able to tolerate that if the class size was so large. There were 30 other -- or there were 30 students in his class. They refused to provide him a one-on-one aide despite him not even being potty-trained. There's no way the teacher could have changed his diaper at that point. So, he was only approved for associate work as a direct service and speech as a consult. He did not receive the services he needed to participate in the general education classroom, let alone education in general, and it was a nightmare. He disrupted the class multiple times, denied education of the other students, and he was suspended multiple times so the staff didn't have to deal with him. And yet, he was refused more services. They put in place a positive behavior support plan, and it was not followed with any consistency because they didn't have the staff to enforce it. His teacher was out on extended medical leave, and the permanent substitutes had no idea that this positive behavior support plan was even in place. So there was a plan, but no support. I had multiple calls home from the principal, the vice-principal, and the social worker, where they would call about his behaviors, and they would be unable to provide any context for what his behavior was, where it happened, what adults he was with, and they had no idea. They just would call to tell me to pick him up, and they couldn't tell me why. So, and they repeatedly asked me to provide consequences at home for behaviors that happened in school and needed to be remediated in the moment. I had to miss work and school because of this. This behavior escalated, and I escalated these needs to Teresa O'Neal and Laura Lamore. Teresa refused to converse via email, and she would only talk on the phone to avoid leaving a paper trail. She made several promises on the phone over the multiple phone calls we had with catchphrase, "We got you," and then denied them, those promises, when she was asked via email. The district refused to deliver his IEP records to me, so a staff member from his early childhood program delivered them to my door. He refused, he was refused additional supports and treated like a terrorist. He was even, isolation was even suggested. I found something in his -- or they found something in his paperwork from when he was three that said autism was a provisional diagnosis, and chose to exit him despite the psychologist documenting multiple concerning incidents on the exit evaluation. He was illegally exited from the special education program. I obtained independent assessments from the MSU Psychological Clinic verifying that he needed special education supports. A thorough reevaluation for eligibility was done by Jameson's new school district that was grossly different from Grand Rapids Public Schools. Where Grand Rapids Public Schools found him eligible in two categories, Forest Hills found him eligible in six categories. He now receives extensive support in and out of the general education classroom and is thriving in a gifted and talented program, and he's doing fourth-grade work.
Ms. Zarmaman, you're going to have to leave it at that. Your time is up. Thank you. Mr. Bukala?
Hi. My name is Michael Bukala. I'm running for school board, and I was Jameson's teacher, and I'd like to follow up with what Tara shared and the treatment that her son received. Throughout my 28 years in Grand Rapids Public Schools, I have experienced being told to lose special ed paperwork, which is against law because the psychologist did not want to test children. I often would have to provide parents with a parent advocate who was Bambi Marshall, and I know the district didn't like her because she was a bulldog who would fight for the rights of children and the parents. And I like to say I blame Teresa, the way she, Jameson was treated, because, given my limited experiences with her, I found her to be quite vindictive, and I'm, but I am happy that Jameson is getting the help that he needs. I do remember when the special ed team convened and illegally exited him from special ed, which was against federal law. They actually said, "We're tired of working with him because he was too difficult to work with," and that's their job, even though he was a challenge. And they also referred to Tara, one of the special ed members, referred to her as a female dog, you know, the B-word, rhymes with itch. So, I also would like to share this one email that I sent to Teresa, just the top part. This was sent in October of 2013. I said, "I didn't send this email to Lynn, but I let it be our secret email. This is how I feel, and I'm honest the way I feel. Every time I hear you speak on the news media, I think of what accomplished actress you've become, because given everything I know, I know you are not sincere. And I know you don't appreciate my candidness, but I tried to be respectful and professional, and I didn't get anywhere." She kept canceling my meetings. This all goes back to the forced agreement that I was forced to sign, all the inappropriate activities that occurred within this district, and I was retaliated against. And so when I read this part in the newspaper, Neal said, "The parental transfer, or potential transfer, does not change her love and respect for the ownership of children." I just found that laughable, Teresa.
Mr. Bukala? You, public comment is for the purpose of making comment on the district's business.
Well--
If you are here to cast aspersions on caricature, then that's not an appropriate moment. If you have some comment to make about the business of the district--
But I just think that the way the district is operating, how they treat children and teachers, you have, you have no idea how you treat them. And I've sent everybody a letter. You mistreat children, and you mistreat teachers. You don't really care about how the district treats them. You deny them services. I tell the truth, and I retaliated against because I was forced to tell the truth, and you didn't like what you heard.
Thank you, Mr. Bukala. Who else do we have?
We have Ryan Jeanette, Courtney Harps, and Solari White.
Point of order, we are, this is related to any, to a specific agenda item that we're voting on? All of public comment?
Correct. So I, please--
Other comment can be made at the end?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Baker. So as Dr. Baker was reminding, this should be related specifically to an agenda item. If your comments aren't related specifically to an agenda item, we're going to ask you to make comment at the end of the meeting. Right? Thank you. Mr. Jeanette?
Thank you, Dr. Vell. My name is Ryan Jeanette. I honestly was debating on if I wanted to come up here and speak or not. I'm not feeling 100%, but then I realized that my voice is needed for this kind of situation. The transition from Kent, for Kent ISD, I'm actually for it, but once I found out that Kent ISD has much more money to take care of these problems, but honestly, this should have been taken care of a year ago. We shouldn't have to transition to Kent ISD. Laura Lamore should never have been given a job here. We can actually probably better fund special education if we were to cut the pay for an overpriced mouthpiece for DeVos and her family, that all have been assured jobs. Kent ISD, the transition from Kent ISD, I'm for, but I would prefer we not need it. I see nine pairs of ayes up here. Only one pair actually cares about the kids. The transition to Kent ISD honestly is needed because they have better facilities, but those facilities were cut through the actions of Neal and Laura Lamore and the school board. And the school board is most likely, is the ones that allowed it to happen. 847, 847 people signed a petition to get Laura Lamore removed. You ignored them, and many of them were attacked and retaliated against. Honestly, I'm getting tired of hearing the same old, same old coming from the Grand Rapids School Board. "We're sorry for your children. We're sorry that we're not providing enough services for them. I'm sorry that we can't do anything for them." Because we have to pay almost $400,000 for, for an administrator that should be earning less than a fourth of that. You can get a better administrator for $75,000. It just sickens me that it's come to this. It honestly breaks my heart to see that we have, the GRPS schools has to transition to Kent ISD just to survive. My girlfriend went to Grand Rapids Public Schools. She wouldn't, she, her and her brother went to Montessori. They're trying to keep their little brother from going there because of the programs and because of GRPS devolving their special education and their regular education.
Mr. Jeanette, unless you have something new to add to the agenda item, I ask you to conclude.
Just that, my sickening of just having to be a part of this.
Thank you. Courtney Harps?
My opinion on you guys cutting the program for special ed kids is wrong. They deserve the same education as regular students. I was in special ed myself. My son, he had mental issues, and he was able to be in regular classes like anybody else. I have a disabled uncle, and maybe you should get people in there that know what they're doing and can handle kids like that. Instead of people getting these trainings, look into people that know what they're doing and families that know what they're doing with these kids, because it's not right, that these kids ain't getting the same opportunity as the regular kids. It's unfair.
Ms. White?
My name is Solari White. I came before the board several weeks, several months ago, and at that time I requested that we consider moving some of the special ed back to the KISD. So I want to thank Dr. O'Neal for taking that step, and I hope that the board will give its final approval, because I do believe that there are resources at the KISD. We live in Forest Hills. We had our child come to the center-based programs, which at one time could have been a best practice model. Ken O'Shea was an amazing best practice model, and I think our center-based programs, when we brought our child, had the potential. But I understand the district has limited resources, and therefore I, I just want to ask the board to give the final approval. Let's move our center-based programs to the KISD where I think they can be best served. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mary Jo Thompson.
Oh, I have nothing to do with this, I'm just general.
Okay. There wasn't a topic line, I'm sorry. So that will be all that we have for, based on the agenda items.
Thank you. Secretaries report. Mark Etchel.
The Academic Achievement Committee, their meeting for August is canceled. A reminder that August 7th is the state primary. Additional information regarding who is running and various seats are available at www accesses.com. You can also find an example of your ballot there. Please head out and vote. November 6th is the general election. Nominating petitions have been filed with the city clerk on behalf of the following individuals for five four-year term positions on the Grand Rapids Board of Education. Those seats are effective January 1st, 2019, until December 31st, 2022. The candidates include Dr. Tony Baker, Michael Bukala, Kimberly Davis, Dr. Jose Flores, Reverend John Mathias, Chad Patton, and Kimberly Williams.
Marion Slade's name is not on that?
Our committee chair updates. Reverend Mathias?
Yeah, just a reminder that our August academic committee meeting is canceled, so.
All right. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Fob and members of the board. I'd like to ask Dr. Ron Gorman to come forward, please.
That made it even lower. I'm not going to show you my expertise at raising it at this time, so I'll slide over.
Our cussing at the chair.
Thank you. I am here this evening, good evening, President Fob, Superintendent Weatherall Neal, distinguished members of our Board of Education. I am here this evening to share two updates with you, one of which is the opening of schools, and secondly, we have the registration process. First and foremost, the first day of school is Monday, August 20, which is two weeks from today. I feel like I was just before you talking about the closing of schools for the year, and I can't believe we're to the first day already. Many of our K5 and K8 schools start every day at 8:30 a.m. Our theme schools, 9:00, 10:00 a.m., and our middle and high schools around 7:30, 7:40 a.m. There are a few variations to these times, specifically Blandford Zoo, Southeast Career Pathways, Grand Rapids Learning Center. Each of these exact times can be located on our website at grps.org. There will be no school on Friday, August 31, and then no school on Labor Day, Monday, which is September 3. Registration, orientation, and open houses are ongoing. Families were notified of these events via mail, robocalls, and emails from their building administrators, as well as the district. In addition, these dates were published in W R G R in the print edition in July. Many of the schools have begun with their ice cream socials, and those are going very well, and there are a few more to come. Switching gears to the registration process, in an effort to expedite our registration process for the 2018-2019 school year, we opened our window for online student enrollment on Friday, May 25, 2018. Parents are utilizing ParentView to update information such as address, phone numbers, student health information, emergency information, et cetera. ParentView may be accessed in many ways: mobile device, tablet, desktop computer, at home, or in the school's library, or in the public library, and any device with access to a web browser can access this information. Parents seem to be much more receptive to the online process this year. Last year was the first year, so we were able to work out some of the bugs, and that process has gone way better this year. So far to date, we have over 4,000 students who are already registered through ParentView, and that's fantastic news considering we have a couple, couple of weeks left. Our goal, as always, is to start the school year smoothly, and we believe this registration process will help us reach that goal. So with that, if there are any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Are these for all students in the district, or new students?
All students in the district.
Including high school students?
Including high school students, absolutely.
And does that replace any in-person registration, then?
If persons would like to register in person, they may go to the school, the physical site, and then use the, the computer lab, or whatever other area that the principal set up to register that way. So they can do at school or at home.
Are the, are the schools accessible now?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, various dates have been sent home by building administration. Many of the high schools and middle school have numerous dates, and lots of flexibility for, for families, and many of the elementary sites have designated their orientation evening or another date to allow parents to go in and do that. Of course, our teachers have access to buildings 10 days before the school year, so principals have professional development tomorrow, but if parents were to go to the schools, there'd be someone there to help them.
And then also, I don't know if this applies to it, but they're having a lot of, a lot of openings at the school themselves as opposed to what we typically have, right?
Same, same.
As far as, as far as welcoming students back to school?
Absolutely. So the, in addition to our, our orientations, registrations, things of that nature, we deviated this year from the Large Park Party, and we've had that, our ice cream social at many of the events as well. So many of the things that we're talking about from a registration perspective can take place that evening as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Gorman. Dr. Fob, I'd like to ask Kurt Johnson to come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. Where did the summer go? Where did it go? Where did-- I think summer break was just all an illusion. Yeah. But needless, needless to say, we are already gearing up for the start of the new school year, and one of the first orders of business is to kick off the fall sports season. And as we do this, we wanted to share a few important reminders. We want our students and parents and communities to start getting accustomed to seeing more information regarding fall sports in the spring of each year before the school year ends. So due to the earlier start of the school year, we will be intensifying our Fast Forward to Fall campaign in the months ahead to inform and encourage students and parents to sign up for fall sports and take fall sports, excuse me, sports physicals during the spring of each year. This kind of eliminates that mad dash to get ready for fall. We remind parents and students that the sports physicals taken after April 15th are good for the entire upcoming school year. So that would include fall, winter, as well as spring. Current opportunities for physicals are, you can contact your primary healthcare provider and the physician, therefore sports physical. You also can contact any of our health service clinics at any of the high schools that have them, and that would be Central High School, Innovation Central, Ottawa Hills, and Union High School. And that's for a free physical that is a part of an exam, annual exam. And information for the high schools can be found on our website at www.grps.org, or call Ottawa Hills at 616-819-5110, or Union's clinic directly at 616-791-6593. So middle school sports physicals will take place on August 23rd and August 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Central High School. And with a special thanks going out to Dr. Conroy and his team from Spectrum Health to come out to our schools and provide this important service for only $5 per person, per student. But a parent needs to tend with a student. Also, Spectrum Health Occupational Clinics, they also provide sports physicals as well at any of their occupational clinics throughout the area for a fee of $55. And you can contact them by calling 616-391-2778. Also, many of the urgent care facilities throughout the area provide sports physicals as well, and you can kind of Google those and find out which one is closest to you. Give them a call and set up an appointment there. So the official start of high school fall sports is today, actually, August 6th for football, and then Wednesday, August 8th, for all of the other fall sports. For middle school, football begins on August 22nd, and all other middle school fall sports will begin August 27th. Elementary fall activities will begin in September, and that's cross-country and soccer. All middle school and high school athletes need to have a valid current sports physical and paid supplemental insurance prior to participating in any practices or competitions. This past Saturday, August 4th, was our annual back-to-school meeting for all athletic coaches. This is our important meeting to prepare all coaches for the upcoming school year. It is always the first Saturday in August unless the calendar kind of shifts there. Sometimes it might be the last Saturday in July. Both high schools and middle school divisions have color brochures indicating program offerings and the requirements-- and the requirements to access the programming, and those will be circulating. Please contact Ottawa Hills or Union High School for fall sports schedule information, as well, we will be making that available through other means as well. Three dates that the high schools would like you to mark your calendar and save the dates for are Friday, August 24, the Football Varsity Season Opener, Ottawa Hills versus Union, our cross-town throwdown. That'll be beginning at 6:00 p.m. at Hausman Field. This is the only free game of the season, so come one, come all. Union High School's homecoming will be Friday, September 7, beginning at 7:00 p.m. at Hausman Field. Ottawa Hills' homecoming will be Friday, September 14, beginning at 7:00 p.m. at Hausman Field as well. We also will be circulating our Coming Attractions card, and that lists all of our big athletic events for the entire school year, such as the 26th Annual Turkey Try. 26 years, can you believe that? Wow. Along with several invitationals and tournaments that will be on that card as well, and you will receive those. So we look forward to seeing each and every one come out and support the students this entire school year for all of the sport seasons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Fob?
Yeah.
Let me ask you something.
I just want to thank you for, my granddaughter is at museum, and this year we got a whole plan for everything that's going to happen as far as her sports and her tryouts and so on, and that's such a relief that she knows when things are happening. And another thing is, once again, she went and had her physical at Union, and I just think that it's so wonderful that we provide those physicals for kids and take care of our kids so well. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing her to participate.
Okay.
We're trying. All right, thank you.
All right, we have two action items this evening on our agenda. The first is the purchasing agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the purchasing agenda?
Motion to approve the purchasing agenda.
Support for that?
Support.
Any concerns, deliberations? Please take the vote. All right. Ms. Shaki is excused. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes? Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Matias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
And President Fob?
Yes.
The second item is the resolution to approve the cooperative agreement to provide special education to center-based programs and services with the ISD. Do I have a motion for approval of that resolution?
Someone.
The chair?
Yeah.
I'd like to speak against this motion. I really think that we're moving again, hard-pressed and fast, to approve a resolution without appropriate community input and deliberation on it. I know I was not available for the last meeting in which we discussed some of this according to the minutes, but I did read the minutes with great interest. There's some concerns that I have. I think that we may be throwing the baby out in the bathwater that the 1,385 students that could potentially, to quote the superintendent about change and how emotional change can be, that these students would be the most impacted, that it may in fact wind up with changes in their school, it may in fact wind up with changes in the staff that are leading them toward their learning experience. And I guess I have to look in the eyes of every one of those young people, and I've had an opportunity to meet some of the special ed students, not only as a teacher, but in the community. And I just, I don't know, I just think it's devastating to see what happens to children when their teacher changes, when they have to change schools. And we don't have a guarantee in this arrangement that KSD will in fact rent all of those buildings and that there won't be change. And then there's the 425 staff members that are going to have to grapple with change here, and I just think we're moving too fast. Without appropriate discussion, I feel like we're doing a disservice. Now, we may have a lot of people in favor of it because they think we've done such a lousy job in serving these kids, and there's some concerns in the community, but I don't think that that should be the reason that we wash our hands of servicing these kids. When you do the math, it's about $8 million that is impacted to the district, and I just see, you know, a downhill spin on this. I'd really like us to reconsider this. So I don't support the motion.
Ms. Grant?
So tonight, I am going to vote in favor of the motion because I welcome the opportunity for us all to have a seat at the table as we really talk about and look at how to create the best environment for our students. And I am voting in favor for this motion with the understanding that GRPS is not walking away from the table, but that there will be more people at the table with us. Hearing all of your comments, all the things, at the end of the day, you know, we don't know each other personally, but I can say that I honestly care about these children, and I know that we need some change. We've all admitted that we need some change. We need more resources, we need more staff for the students, and I'm voting, hoping that that means more of that will come to the table when all of the districts are involved in that. And so I want to be clear about the conversations that we have. GRPS is not walking away from these students, but hoping that we bring more hands to the table in this.
May I ask, if we vote to approve, what will happen next? What's the next thing that will happen?
So the second step, if in fact this is approved by the board, will be to meet with the ISD and other superintendents to create a plan. It will take a year to plan this transition. The ISD superintendent is ready. We both have attorneys working on both sides. Rather the vote goes up or down, we will work with our personnel, our HR department will work with the ISD's HR department in order to make a smooth transition. And so that would be the next steps, is to come together.
And then we all come together, and then in the end, is there another vote, or is this?
No.
We are definitely tonight voting to move it.
And you can vote it up or down.
I think the question's appropriate in that to make plans, there has to be some resolution from the board. So no planning, no work, no process can occur until... Dr. Baker?
Dr. Flores raises a couple of questions I think that we discussed at the last meeting, but I just think it's good to clarify. One is just the loss of the, you know, the number of students, our enrollment would go down, and with that, the revenue that we would use. And so what are the, is it okay to discuss what budget implications would have, which I think was part of Dr. Flores's concerns?
Yeah. I mean, perhaps I should have waited to do the motion.
Yeah.
It's an info ahead of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I have some other questions like that, too.
Yeah.
So I will ask Larry Oberst to come down, and Laura. Currently, the special ed programs, the center-based programs, we are billed from the district, including Grand Rapids Public Schools. We pay our fair share, our bill as well. And so the dollars that we will not have in the districts would be considered almost as an indirect dollars for not having the program.
So overall, I mean, I get the sense that our enrollment would go down with that, you know, our per pupil aid, but then also we would have fewer costs associated with that, and theoretically, the ISD would have more resources.
That's correct.
Is that ballpark what's happening?
Yeah. First of all, you have to understand that, as I've talked before at the work session, certainly, this, the funding of the center-based programs is complicated, all right? Inasmuch as the students that enrolled there come officially into our count, we don't get revenue for those students. We don't get a foundation allowance. The reimbursement for center-based students, no matter what district they come from, is essentially based on a cost-based reimbursement system. So part of it comes from the state. As I mentioned before, the other funding for those services come from Act $18, dollars from the ISD. So in terms of lost revenue from a foundation allowance, that will have no impact moving it from our administration to the ISD's administration, the program. Now, what we do receive, and what is in the total cost basis, again, we look at the total cost running the programs. It's based on, it's program-specific, and then we take those total costs, reduce the reimbursements from the state, from the Act $18, is actually the enhancement millage that, they also get enhancement millage dollars. We take all those revenue and reimbursement sources. Whatever cost is left over is billed out to the individual districts based on the number of students they have enrolled in particular programs. We call it tuition. So we pay tuition to the center-based programs for our students, and that tuition amount has been decreasing over the last few years. Part of it is additional revenue, like enhancement dollars. Part of it is we've done a better job managing our costs. Part of it is we've just, we've had fewer students within the center-based programs also. So part of the total cost of the program is GRPS's administration of that program. So as an example, I spend time on that, you know, my staff in the business office spends time on that. Obviously, Laura spends time on that. So there's an allocation of the costs that we incur to administer the program. They get billed in a part of the cost basis of the center-based programs. So GRPS gets essentially reimbursed for those dollar amounts, okay? And that's approximately about $1 million a year. And that's the amount we're talking about, you know, we certainly, that would not be allocated back over to us if we, you know, if we stopped ministering the center-based program, as is what's asked today.
But we're spending those resources.
Well, those resources are spent anyways.
So we're reimbursing ourselves.
Yeah, but they're, part of them, obviously, I mean, we didn't hire, one of the gentlemen in my business office, he does other things besides special ed, so we didn't hire him specifically for special ed programs. But we believed, as we've had preliminary discussions internally, that the superintendent has been part of, and Laura and the business office, we believe that we can recoup a vast majority of that $1 million we're getting reimbursed as an indirect cost. So we essentially pay ourselves, we pay ourselves tuition, if you will, to cost out, then we get, we pay ourselves back for this approximate $1 million in indirect cost that gets allocated to the program for our administrative work in administering the program. Then obviously, all the direct costs, you know, the direct personnel costs, which a vast majority gets charged directly, that the building costs, those kinds, all the direct costs that we can identify with administering a program are in the cost basis, too. The only indirect, if you will, cost is our cost administration. And that was based on an allocation form that was established a number of years ago, way before my time. We've tweaked it a bit over the years, but by and large, and I will tell you, all the costs of the district that we incurred administered a program not fully in that allocation basis. So that's the way it really works, the financial side of things.
Okay. Would you?
I would like to ask one more question, if I may. If at the end of the year, or however long the study takes, we can't reach an agreement, what happens then? If we can't do anything satisfactory that the county isn't in favor of, or that we can't reach agreement with our teachers, from the union, what happens?
My understanding, I mean, I'm trying to understand your question. My understanding is, right now, we contract to do it for the ISD, so by not entering into that contract, it is the responsibility of the ISD to provide it.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, and that is the norm across the state.
All right, that is correct. And Mrs. Lewis, we have our, Jeff Butler is here tonight somewhere, guys. Jeff Butler is here, the attorney is here tonight, he can answer questions, and Sharon Pitts. But there will, there will not be an agreement to negotiate, per se. But Jeff and Sharon, if you'd like to come up and answer any questions.
While they're transitioning, just, and again, I think that others have raised this stuff, but, these questions, but, you know, overall impact on students, what will the students and families notice in the transition? Will there be disruption? Or will, is it likely it'll be somewhat seamless in terms of the transition? I don't know. Who would like to? I mean, so this is, so I got one for the staff, but this question is, how will students and families experience this transition? And will it be, maybe Laura has this, will it be noticeable? Will there be opportunities for more resources? Or will it be, and will it be seamless? Will it be disruptive?
Yeah, the plan is for it to be absolutely seamless. The ISD, in partnership with Grand Rapids, has a number of committees that are currently seated. There's the Center Program Advisory Committee, there's a Center Program Finance Committee, there's a Superintendent's Advisory Committee for Special Education, and so on a monthly basis, these three committees meet, and so do the respective regional representatives of the other constituent districts around Kent ISD. While we can't speak for Kent ISD, we would work in absolute cooperation, collaboration, continue our very transparent work on behalf of students, make plans for the smooth transition of programming and services, so that, I think the common goal in speaking from our seat to theirs is low to no impact on student performance, because we're in this work for kids. That's why we're all here. It's what we do best, and it's what our focus will continue to be. And our colleagues from around the county have expressed the same genuine first-position goal in making that happen for kids.
And may I add, I also know that the ISD is planning some listening sessions with parents so that they can get questions answered, so that they are prepared. I know that they plan on, and I think have two already scheduled, or will be scheduled, so that they, and I think the person that is doing it is the same person that's doing their, what do we call that? Their assessment, their...
The study.
The study, their study. So they would, that's a part of the, would be used in a part of the transition, so parents would have a voice in that, too.
And then finally, one more question. This is for you, Sharon.
Okay.
Discuss the staff transition.
Yes. Yeah. So we, someone had asked me, and I think I sent some information about the salary piece. I know that they are committed to working with us. Obviously, they need staff. We all need staff. This is not an area where you couldn't take the staff and expect to hire other staff. I mean, there's a shortage around the state, so they're encouraging, and I believe the preliminary discussions that we had with that, that, you know, they're committed to taking most of the staff. I don't know that they would take all. I don't want to sit here and say that. But, and that their current practice is that they take staff at, you know, their current salary, and then they actually move them up one step higher, which I thought was pretty fantastic. But we would definitely be working with them to ensure that our staff do not lose ground, and quite frankly, they really couldn't, I mean, they just couldn't successfully run the program if they don't have the staff, and especially our staff, because they do know the students, and there's no supply of additional folks that they could actually get to turn around, even in a year. Believe me, we've tried to look for them, so we know that, what it takes to have staff, and already have experienced staff.
No. What would happen if there were teachers who are working for us and want to stay with Grand Rapids Public Schools rather than move to the ISD?
Well, we'll have to have an assessment of what they do teach. You know, we do have teachers now in position, so we would have to be very careful about moving some teachers out to put some other teachers in, so that, you know, that probably would not be possible unless we had vacancies, which we always do. So, you know, so we have to be careful about that, that switch. Now, for the ancillary staff, the support, the staff that's not, you know, the PTs, OTs, et cetera, they have bidding and bumping rights, so perhaps there would be some changes, you know, some opportunities for them there. But overall, as I say, we always have vacancies, much to my chagrin, so there's usually opportunities for staff members.
So if some staff did decide, I want to stay as a GRPS?
Well, they would certainly have an opportunity to look at. Now, you know, we have a process that we use for all staff, and it won't be any different for this staff. for this staff. We have an interview process because we no longer force staff onto schools. We let principals be involved and administrators involved in that process. However, obviously, if you're tenured with us, you know, we have to place you somewhere. But we have a more collaborative process that we've been using, and I think it helps as we hold schools accountable to have, you know, make sure that there's a good fit between the administrators and the staff people. So, yes, we would engage in our regular process for those, for the vacancy positions. And, yeah.
I know one of the discussions that we had is in terms of building usage and where those students would go.
So, we anticipate that the ISD would want to use the same buildings that we have. They don't have other buildings.
So, they wouldn't go.
Currently.
They'd have to build their own buildings.
Buildings belong to them.
Programs already belong to the ISD.
They belong to the ISD.
Right, so I think one of, maybe some of the concerns of parents is, oh no, they're gonna, they're gonna be relocated somewhere, and more likely, they're gonna stay in the same facilities that they're in, correct?
Correct. And because the ISD owns the buildings, most of these buildings are not owned by us.
The community transition sites, are those are probably the exception to that? Or are they mixed or?
Straight is owned by us and Ken, probably should come up front. Straight and Oakley. And Ken O'Shea, right. But otherwise, the ISD owns the buildings.
The Mayfield Building for the Community Transition Campus is owned by the ISD. And then there are five additional sites that are community-based, so they're not, they belong to Mary Freebed. They belong to Cook Center for the Arts because we embed programming in the community, which is better for young adults.
Any questions for staff?
Well, I'd like to say, you know, I think that we, as, you know, learned in lots of ways, you know, it's a huge responsibility and burden to carry, as with the rest of the district. And I think that the ISD, I see as set up to carry the burden of school districts, and we have been carrying that for the other school districts. And, you know, I certainly don't see us as walking away. I think that we have accepted, we've accepted students from all over the county for decades, and at times, we have or haven't had the support from the rest of the county. I think that this is, this is what the ISD is set up to do. It's to set up to do the things that individual school districts don't have the capacity to do, because individual school districts are also expected to have a graduation rate and prepare people for college and career and teach them how to read. And those are, those are also burdens that we have that are, not necessarily have the proper resources attached to it. And I think that, I think that the ISD is best at doing this. And I think that, the other thing about that is that that means the students that come from all of those communities that are part of the ISD can go to their own school districts and their own school boards to advocate for themselves at the ISD level. And I think that that's important, and it brings it closer. The questions I've had and others have had these same questions, and, you know, the students seem to be able to make the transition without noticing it much. And hopefully, with more resources, staff is going to be, have opportunities to move and hopefully be compensated well. And it seems like, I haven't heard the downside of this. I've only heard people who have talked positively about this. So, anyway, that's my perspective, so I'll support it.
Just want to take on that and connect back to Ms. Grant's comments about, first of all, I think that we had a lot of assurances and a lot of sense of an ongoing review, an ongoing look at compliance, an ongoing audit on how we can improve, and that conversation's going to continue with the ISD. It came long before, it's ongoing with the futures report. So, I, you know, I have a sense there may be very, you know, little transition. It'll be more an ongoing work to try to do the best we can by these students. The plus side is we are going to have a broader sense of representation that Ms. Grant was referencing and Dr. Baker, that everybody from the county will be represented at the table. So, I think that can only bring along health. And as Ms. Pitts was mentioning, these are, these teachers are in short supply. It'll be in the ISD's best interest to retain them, because I know the board expressed their great concern that they had consistency in relationships with those teachers. And that's likely to happen, especially if there's an increase in pay. So, I'm feeling very good that we need to make the next step to move this forward and start the process for, between the district and the ISD to look at it.
Yes, I want to add also that throughout the state of Michigan, most IS, the ISDs really run center programs, as I did in Kalamazoo. That's the way it usually is, so that everybody's at the table.
Dr. Flores?
I would just like to reiterate that I, we have not seen an articulated plan. We have witnessed and heard about assumptions that there will be an excellent process in place, but there are really no assurances in this. We have not seen the plan, and I just think we're moving too fast. And there's certainly a lot of room for us to fall between the cracks, or students and staff to fall between the cracks in a process that has not been clearly defined. And even though, you know, people express that that change is seamless, it's rarely seamless. It's rarely seamless. There's always a downside. So, at least, you know, that's been my experience. You know, I've had good examples of it in my past where people have promised things, and then those promises were not kept. And we're talking about the lives of children and parents. I wonder what the gain is to our district and why we're just absolving ourselves from serving these children, when in fact, more than one-third of our students actually qualify for those services. And really, there's benefit from having them consolidated under our umbrella of services.
For clarification, this is the center-based programming, not all of special.
Yeah, I do understand that. Significant number of students, 1,385, 425 staff.
There's a motion on the table. If there are no more comments, we can.
Well, I do agree with Dr. Jose, or Dr. Flores, that, you know, we have been promised seamlessness, and obviously, we're dealing with human beings, and there'll probably be glitches along the way. That's what we can expect because we're dealing with human beings. But I just believe that, obviously, we haven't been doing as good a job as somebody else might be doing. And why not see if there is another option here and allow the ISD to do it? Because obviously, we have not fulfilled the expectations of some of our parents, and we've heard from them. And this seems to be a good alternative to what we've done in the past.
I just have to say that I don't want to conflate the comments that have been made here with this decision, because they are not, they are not necessarily directly related in my understanding.
And all I understand, all I am saying is that there, obviously, there have been issues. For whatever reason, there have been issues. And regardless if we have done this with or without the issues, the fact is, we're going to do this, and perhaps some of those issues might be accommodated.
All right, we have a motion. Ms. Shaki is excused, Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
No.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
And President Fau.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
The vote.
Let's take the vote. Ms. Shaki is excused, Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Fau?
Yes.
We have no discussion items. I believe we have a couple of, yes, we have two comments, Mary Jo Thompson and Kelly Hune. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
Hi, I'm Kelly Hune. I want to start out by saying that I recognize that nothing would be done to change the 18, 19 school year. However, if you don't, if you're not made aware that there's an issue, you can't do anything about it in the future. Starting the school year in August will likely lead to two less weeks of learning this year for many schools in the district, but especially for the students in buildings taller than two stories, such as Campus Elementary, Grand Rapids Montessori, and Central Innovation. According to a study done at Harvard Kennedy School of Government titled "Heat and Learning", their evidence-based study showed a significant cognitive skill inhibition. Air-conditioned classrooms performed at a 78% higher rate versus students in classrooms where temperatures reached and exceeded 85 degrees, which is also referred to as the heat stress index. And I have that information from the study, if you're interested. But that was all, just concerns. If you have any questions, please feel free to go to any of the three schools that I listed or any of the others, and maybe spend an hour trying to work on the third or fourth floor. I personally have a heart condition, and I passed out while volunteering at my, in my daughter's classroom on the third floor in Grand Rapids Montessori last September, which I realize it was just a fluke of, a week of 90-degree days. But it did happen. So, just wanted to raise that awareness. So, thank you for your time.
Ms. Thompson?
Hi. Mary Jo, again. I had some concerns about the special ed, because I wondered about teachers having autistic children who take the greater part of almost one year to get safe to someone, and they establish those bonds and it'll be changed. I totally get that, as long as it's being done. Right now, I don't have someone in that program, so. My second concern was the air conditioning in some of the schools too. I have a son that's right on his IEP. He has to be in air conditioning. So, I'm not quite sure how that's all going to work out, because he has to have it, so I don't know, does teacher go with him? Does bus drivers love it because he always has to be in air conditioning? So, they fight for his bus. The third thing I had in order was, y'all know I'm a foster mom, and I got three new kids, all special ed. And I'm sure Laura will remember our robber. Yeah, so I have more kids coming, and I really am trying to go about this open-minded about getting these kids what they need, because I go from mom and dad to mother and I make no excuses. My kids demand the best, and only with me for this, like, the time they need it. I just want to hope to God that all this remains seamless and that it does, there's no bumps, huge bumps. We do have little bumps when these kids are coming in, because I have more of a voice, we have more of a standing, we have a huge group behind us, and I don't want to have to be in that group state, you know? This is another thing we have. So, I appreciate it, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Superintendent's comment.
Oh, we do. Oh, sorry. Okay. So, we have James White and Eric John. Mr. John, if you'd like to join them as well, thank you.
Good evening. I had not planned on speaking, so I will try to be as brief as possible. My name is James White. My wife spoke earlier. I wanted to just mention that I am in favor of the proposed transition from GRPS to KISD for the special education program. But one of the things I wanted to point out, and I, with Dr. Flores, I've got a lot of concerns about how this is done. Because one of the things you mentioned was, you know, you're aware of situations in the past where people have been made promises, and they didn't happen. And that, from my experience over these last couple of years, that's kind of what happened with KISD. We were made promises as it related to straight school and what that was supposed to be. And that was, for lack of a better way of saying it, in a polite way to say it, I felt like we were very well misled on what that was, what the expectation was. And the comment that I wanted to make was, I am, I know there are people who are concerned about seamlessness, and I am far less concerned about being seamless as I am being transparent. I am more concerned with transparency in what is happening with this process and what the ultimate outcome, because as a child, as a parent of a young adult who's in his mid-20s, he doesn't have the time to wait. It is very reminiscent, as we talk about people with special needs and this transition process, of when people talked about integration of the schools many, many moons ago. And a lot of the same arguments that were made at that point was, well, we need to be concerned with transition and how that happens, and we need to take our time. Well, I'm concerned that these kids don't have that time to wait. You know, two years goes by, my son ages out of the system. While this may benefit kids who come behind him, which is part of what my concern is, is that it does benefit those who does come behind him. Because for all it's a purpose, by the time this does take place, he may have one year left. But I'm concerned about all of the kids that I see when I'm coaching Special Olympics or the other activities that I'm involved in. And I notice that these kids, they have potential, they have value. We have to look at, and this is, I think, the role of the board. We have to recognize and be more interested in what small things that these kids contribute to society and that make us a better community than the things that limit them. And without placing blame on anybody, the reality is, what's been going on hasn't worked. And the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. So, I am in favor of us doing something to do this transition. I am more concerned with the transparency of this transition. And you always will have that opportunity to vote on this at the end of it anyway. So, it's not like this is a one decision and it's done, but we have to take those first steps. So, I just want to commend you for actually voting to at least start that process. Dr. Flores, I have a lot of your same concerns.
Thank you, Mr. White. Your time's done.
All right, thank you.
Still working on getting your name, last name, right?
Chapaniac.
Chapaniac. I'd panic when I see it written.
Right.
It'd be Chapaniac.
Yeah, some people still say that, but my family says Chapaniac. All right, my name is Eric John Chapaniac. I'm a member of the Kennetwood Hills Board of Education. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the Kent ISD Board of Education, and I thought, what better place than right where I started, I went to Grand Rapids Public Schools, K8, than to announce that I will be seeking a position on the Kent Intermediate School District Board of Education. The vote is next May 2019. And if you're unfamiliar or forgot since the last time you did it, this election is decided by the 20 constituent boards of our local school districts. So, I'm going to try to meet everyone in the county. I would encourage you all to set up a one-on-one with me, and in the future, I hope to be able to come back, more of like a board interview, like you would if you had a vacancy, so that we can have a little bit of back and forth, and you can ask me the tough questions that you need to know about a member of the Kent ISD Board of Education. I also wanted to talk to you a little bit about myself and some of the plans that I have for the ISD, since there's been so much talk today about representation at the ISD level. So, first off, I wanted to say that one thing that the ISD can do a little bit differently and a little bit more proactively, in tangent with the decision you made tonight, is engage with all 20 local school districts every budget-setting season. Genesee ISD does this currently, and they have 21 school districts, and we have 20 in Kent ISD. So, it can be done, and it's something that should be done, bringing everyone in the county to the table to talk about, you know, our budget is our values. to the table to talk about, you know, our budget is our values. So, you can ask the tough questions, and you can make sure that you're accountable to your community to say, "Look, we were at the table." Like a lot of what you spoke about today, you're not leaving the conversation, but just adding more voices to it. So, you can say, "Look, we were at the table. We helped set the budget, and we made sure that our priorities were in that budget and that they're met as years come." I'd also like to say that another part of what I will do, and what I do currently, is advocate for students, as you all do in your respective roles. But as you know, or as you may know, Michigan was rated 50 out of 50 when it comes to special education students. And part of that is because they get the same foundation allowance as general education students, even though we know it's a bit more expensive for those students to be educated. So, I will work with members of the Kent ISD constituent school boards to try to get legislators' attention and bring that issue up to the forefront again, and hopefully make some progress on that. I also wanted to say, I've had this conversation in depth with two leading members of our education and service community, Sanita Lanier and Lupe Ramos-Montini, who have both endorsed this campaign. So, I'm already doing the legwork of meeting with individuals, and I hope to get the chance to meet with all of you in the coming months to share more in-depth of my plans for the ISD, but really to get your thoughts on what you want to see in the ISD, what I can do to help reach your goals, because that's what we're all here to do, is to be active and engaged listeners rather than speakers. So, please reach out, and I'll reach out again to try to set up more of a board interview style for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chapaniak.
Thank you.
Superintendent's comments?
No comment, Dr. Faub.
Reverend Mathias?
I can't believe that school's going to start. You know, it's exciting to see the change to having the schools do an open house where they can actually meet the community and engage. I was at a 35-year reunion, and it was interesting, high school reunion, not mine, but someone else's. And there was a, my, anyway. It, my, it was really interesting to see some of the ideas that I want to, that I want to share with us. But just to see that our, our communities can take ownership and principals can take ownership of that within their community and build that momentum, excitement for their particular building and culture there, so.
Dr. Flores?
Yeah, I'd like to say I'm happy to be back from the other side of the wall. I was on vacation for a week. Well-deserved, and I'm refreshed and excited.
You got through?
Oh, absolutely. A few of us climbed it, but no one, that jump. Mexicans can't jump. So, that's me. No, I flew back. It was, it was quite an experience, and I had to deal with my humor, because I believe in humor. Secondly, is I'd like to say that, you know, history is our best teacher. And I taught U.S. history and social studies in our district. And I've always said, you know what, I, I'd like to be on the right side of history, and I hope that the actions that the sport takes are on the right side of history and are in the best interest of the kids that we serve. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Dr. Baker?
To say that, you know, I'm very, very happy and proud to serve on this board, and all the eyes up here and all the hearts up here care and struggle hard to do the right thing. And it's been, it's an incredible honor to be a part of it.
No comment.
Yes, I would like to congratulate, I think it was nine members, new members of the class of 2018 that graduated on Christmas in July, July 25. And I have to say that I, I love the way that Dr. Gorman presents it to these kids, and they, he says, "You are members of the class of 2018, and, you know, two years, five years, 10 years from now, nobody's ever going to remember if you graduated in May or in the middle of July." And I think that's a great way to send the kids off and make them feel that, you know, even though it took them a little bit longer, they did it. And the day was so wonderful, because the kids had so many parents and family members there, and then U-Prep had treats and stuff after the ceremony. And so, it was just a really nice event, and I'm glad that Dr. Gorman does that. Thank you, Dr.
Comment?
No comment from me.
I just want to give a huge thanks to all the principals that came back very early this year, and all of the staff, and everybody who is working to gear up to have the very best beginning of a school year possible. To Mr. Clumperens, with all the facility things going on. I'm looking forward to cutting the ribbon at the museum school. That's terribly exciting, and so many great things going on. And we have so much dedication in this district, people getting back, getting back to work and managing what's coming their way to make sure that we can do the best for their students. So, huge thanks to everybody that's been working hard. Meeting adjourned.